It's six o'clock PM. All members are present except for Justin Pluess, who is with us on Zoom.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. All right, item three. Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Item four, reading of the minutes from the previous meeting held on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Attached, item one, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Veneman, second by Austin. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballot. Justin?
I'm an aye. I'm an aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Item five, consider for confirmation the mayor or Mayor Zachar's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. The following appointments have been submitted for your approval. Historic Preservation Historic Preservation Commission Katie Bailey at four one one Sixth Street South is appointed as alternate member to a term expiring two one two thousand and twenty-six. Parks and Recreation Commission Susan Faust at three three one zero Eighteenth Street South is appointed as a regular member to replace Tom Raome to a term expiring five one two thousand and twenty-nine. Planning Commission Katie Bailey, four one one Sixth Street South is appointed as a regular member to replace Thaddeus Kubisak to a term expiring at five one two thousand and twenty-five. Waste Water Treatment Commission Greg Luke at four 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 Pepper Avenue is appointed as a regular member to replace David Laspa to a term expiring six one two thousand and twenty-nine. And Zoning Board of Appeals have Mike Derry at thirty thirty Tenth Street South is appointed as a regular member to replace David Laspa to a term expiring eleven one two thousand and twenty-seven. And Peggy Montag at eight three zero Sixteenth Street South is appointed as a regular member to replace Bruce Culver to a term expiring eleven one two thousand and twenty-seven. What are your wishes? I got a motion by Katna. Seconded by Palmquist. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote.
I'm an aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Item six, consider the appointment of two regular members to the Ethics Board for terms expiring November one two thousand and twenty-seven. Jennifer?
We have two candidates. One is Rick Wellnitz and the other one is Lee Gosick. Rick would be replacing Rene Fisher and Lee would be a reappointment for terms expiring in two thousand and twenty-seven.
So of the two, we have two seats to be filled. We would need somebody to nominate the persons that they wish to fill those seats.
I'll nominate Lee Gosick.
Katna, Mr. Katna nominated Lee Gosick.
I'll second him. Do you not need a second?
Seconded by Lewis.
I'll nominate Emily Kent.
All right. Okay.
Alder Person Austin nominated Rick. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you said I thought you said Rick. I'm sorry. Emily Kent. I don't have an application from her. It's that's to Emily from Rick. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. It's up to the council whether they want to do them together or separately.
Are there any further nominations that anyone would like to bring forth at this time? Seeing none, I need a consent if you guys want to vote on both at the same time or one at a time.
Yes.
Yes, they both expire November first of this year, and so their their next term would expire in two thousand and twenty-seven in November.
We can still do it on the voting board? We don't need a motion and a second. We just need to vote. We do. Okay, yeah.
So I got a motion by Katna, seconded by Palmquist to take the vote. And now.
Oh, wait.
I apologize. That was from the last screen. We need a we do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to vote on both nominees. To appoint both nominees.
I got a motion by Katna, seconded by Pence Gover. Go ahead and cast your votes.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Thank you. Item seven, set date for public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five budget. Tim?
I propose that we schedule the public hearing for Thursday, November fourteenth at six PM in the council chambers. Reason we have to set the date is one, we want to get that on the calendar, and plus I have to publish the budget fifteen days prior to the public hearing.
So we have Thursday, November fourteenth. If six thirty works okay for everybody? Any questions? Justin?
Works for me. Tuesday, the fourteenth.
Thursday, November, yeah, Thursday, November fourteenth at six thirty will be the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five budget.
I was just clarifying whether it was six or six thirty. Mayor Zachar said six thirty twice, so I'm going with that.
Yeah, we have I have municipal court trials that are scheduled and witnesses and stuff, so I can't really change those right now. So we should I'll try to be done by by six fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at the following meeting, special meeting held on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Kyle?
Thank you. The Planning Commission met at four PM on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four in the council chambers. The quorum of members was present and a list of others in attendance is available in Community Development and Clerk's Office. The meeting was called to order at four PM. Item one was approval of the report from September ninth. There was a motion by Maroots to approve. Seconded by Palmquist, that motion carried four zero. Item two was a request from Kevin Fangman for a special exception to exceed the floor area of the attached garage in the mixed residential R-two district at seven ten Third Street South. Staff provided a summary of the request. There was some discussion amongst the commission and the applicant. A motion was made by Palmquist to approve the request, subject to two conditions identified in the minutes. That that received a second from Daven and that motion carried four zero. Item three was adjournment. There was a motion by Maroots to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Daven. The meeting was adjourned at four sixteen. I need to correct that there were all ayes, four zero on item three, which is the motion. I will make that correction.
That's all right. Thank you. What are your wishes? I have a motion by Palmquist and a second by Pence Gover to.
Approve.
Approve. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Justin's an aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. And meeting held on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission met at four PM on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four in the council chambers. Quorum of members was present and a list of others in attendance is available in Community Development or the Clerk's Office. The meeting was called to order at four PM. Item one was approval of the report from September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. There was a motion by Daven to approve that report, seconded by Palmquist, that motion carried four zero. Item two was a request from Fump Star Services LLC for a public hearing in action on a conditional use permit to operate a contractor yard at three twenty-one Fourth Avenue North, which falls within the general M-one industrial district. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a public hearing that opened at four oh six PM. Speaking in favor included Andrea Jensen and Andrew Jensen of Tri-City Services. Speaking against, none. Public hearing closed at four oh nine PM. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request from Fump Star Services, subject to three conditions outlined in the meeting minutes. There was a second by Goodrow. That motion carried four zero. Item three was a request from SN Ram Hotels LLC, which was a public hearing in action to obtain a conditional use permit to conduct outdoor recreational activities and site improvements at four fifty-one East Grand Avenue, which falls within the B-two general commercial district. Staff provided a summary of the report identifying that there were some missing items in the applicant's request primarily in relation to the the band shell that's proposed and therefore only recommended approval of the outdoor volleyball court, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a public hearing at four twenty-one PM. Speaking in favor, none. Speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at four twenty-two PM. Staff read two emails into the record from citizens citing concerns about lighting for the project. Discussion took place amongst the commission. There was a motion by Goodrow to approve the request that included only the outdoor recreation for the volleyball courts. There was a second by Palmquist. The applicant Sean Patel joined the meeting at this point. There was additional conversation amongst the commission and the applicant. And Mr. Goodrow amended his motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit. The amendment was to include a closure time of eleven PM, which was included in the conditions. There was a second by Palmquist and that motion carried with the seven conditions, four zero. Item four was a request from the Community Development Department for a public hearing in action to amend the zoning ordinance, specifically Appendix A Land Use Matrix in Division Five and Six Site Plan and Plan of Operations slash Architectural Review to modify the secondary review requirements for uses. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There were some questions from the commission about the the request. Public hearing opened at four fifty-eight PM. No one spoke against or in favor. That public hearing closed at four fifty-nine. There was a motion by Goodrow to approve the ordinance amendment. Seconded by Daven, that motion carried four zero. Item five was staff updates. Mr. Kearns provided updates regarding the foundry and the downtown master plan. No action was taken. Item six was adjournment. There was a motion by Goodrow to adjourn the meeting. Seconded by Palmquist, that motion carried four zero. The meeting adjourned at five oh one PM. I respectfully submit that for your review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney?
I have two questions. The first was had to do with the closing time of the volleyball operations. Is that a standard time? Is there something in our zoning that has anything to do with eleven PM?
No, I think I think we had asked the applicant how long the volleyball courts were going to be open or how long he wanted them open, and he referenced the eleven o'clock time. So Plan Commission thought it pertinent to then require that eleven shall be the cutoff for those events.
Are there concerns with them playing volleyball past eleven o'clock or?
I think typically, you know, you think of noise that may be associated with it. Obviously, if you're consuming alcohol or beverages, that could be accelerated. You think of, you know, the the hotel that exists there and how it could potentially impact that noise could impact those staying at the hotel. So I think, you know, ten or eleven is probably appropriate. There were other concerns in regards to lighting and fencing that were also addressed as part of the conditions recommended for approval.
My second question had to do with item four. Was there changes made to this by the Planning Commission as to what you had proposed?
There were not.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other que- any other questions, comments? What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Ven- Veneman to approve. Seconded by Pence Gover. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Lewis is an aye.
Thank you. Yes. That's eight ayes or motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Item nine, consider for adoption the actions of the standing committees of the common council as follows. A Finance and Property Committee meeting held on October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Katna?
The Finance and Property Committee met at five PM on Tuesday, October first, two thousand and twenty-four, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present, except Alder Person Veneman, who was excused. Alder Person Pollock attended in place of Alder Person Veneman. Item one was called to order. The meeting was called to order at five PM. Item two was considered request from the Fire Department to approve the distribution of funds from the sale of the old Fire Department equipment on the Wisconsin Surplus Auction Site. The Fire Department Equipment Maintenance Fund to offset the cost of replacement equipment. It was moved by Pollock, seconded by Katna to approve the distribution of the funds from the old Fire Department equipment on the Wisconsin Auction Surplus Site to the Fire Department Equipment Fund to offset the cost of the replacement equipment. Motion carried two one with Alder Person Delaney voting in the negative. Item three, consider the renewal of the city's contract with the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney to approve the two thousand and twenty-five contract with the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Motion carried three zero. Item four, consider for approval a request from Eco ATM LLC, Sean Flaherty Agent located at forty-three thirty-one H Street South for renewal of a second-hand Article Dealer License. Moved by Katna, seconded by Pollock to approve the request. Motion carried three zero. Item five, consider for approval the appointment of Jessica Kramer as a successor agent for the Retail Class A Fermented Malt Beverages and Retail Class A Intoxicating Liquor Licenses for QuickTrip Inc., QuickTrip one twenty-eight at eleven eleven Lincoln Street. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Pollock to approve the appointment of Jessica as a successor agent. Motion carried three zero. Item six, out of the bills. The list of checks was not distributed in advance of the meeting. No action was taken. Item seven, two thousand and twenty-five budget update. Mayor Zachar updated the committee on the proposed committee of the whole meetings for the two thousand and twenty-five budget. Item eight, set next meeting date. The next regular meeting of the Finance and Property Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, at four thirty PM. Item nine, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen dot eight five, pair one, pair E, the Wisconsin statutes. In closed session, the committee will consider a notice of circumstances giving rise to claim filed by Eagle Prairie Incorporated and C.C. Briarwoods LLC regarding a claim for an alleged excessive tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-four. B, in closed session, the committee will consider settlement and dismissal of a lawsuit filed by Eagle Prairie and Briarwoods LLC regarding its tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-three. In closed session, the committee considered a notice of circumstances giving rise to a claim filed by Eagle Prairie Incorporated and Briarwoods LLC regarding a claim for an alleged excessive tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-four and a settlement and dismissal of a lawsuit filed by Eagle Prairie and Briarwoods LLC regarding its tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-three. Item ten, the committee will turn to open session. It's moved by Delaney, seconded by Pollock. Motion carried three zero to return to open session. Item eleven, the committee may consider and may take action on the claim contained in a notice of circumstances giving rise to claim filed by Eagle Prairie Incorporated and Briarwoods LLC regarding alleged excessive tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-four. No action was taken. Item twelve, the committee may consider and may take action on the settlement and dismissal of lawsuit filed by Eagle Prairie Inc. and C.C. Briarwoods LLC regarding its tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-three. No action was taken. Item thirteen was adjournment. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Pollock to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. And with that, I'll make a motion to submit these minutes for approval, holding out items three and seven. Seven to be held out till the end of the coming council meeting.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Delaney?
Okay, item two, there were some questions about actually there's really no information given at the meeting. Chief said he'd like to speak to it at this meeting. I'd like to hear from him what this was concerning. I'd like to discuss item two.
All right. I'm seconded by Austin. All right. So now we're speaking to item two, chief.
Sure. First, I apologize for not being at that meeting. I had all the intentions of, and that's why I never spoke to to Tim, but I had a family situation I needed to attend to, so that's why I wasn't there. But what I was asking for is Tim had talked about at that meeting that generally it does go back into the the funds. But when we sell stuff on the auction site, we just save a bunch of it to put on all at once instead of putting it on every week, you know? So there's two items in there that would in in general would get put back into the Building and Grounds Fund that we have. But our equipment fund, so we're talking about our equipment maintenance, like our SCBA's and things that hit really hard this year and is really depleted. And I just was asking to have the whole thing put into that equipment fund to try to offset that cost that that fund is depleted down from. So that's why I I asked for that to be put in there.
Would you care to explain what items and how much we're gonna expect to get out of these?
Sure. So went on site. There's one person bought a bunch of foam deductors, a bunch of old nozzles. One was a old refrigerator from the remodel. One was a monitor, so like a a screen that was taken out of service. One was a class three rescue harness. One was a ten-foot folding ladder that these ladders, when they no longer can be kept in service, could still, somebody at home could buy them and use them for home use or whatever. So it's like an attic ladder, folds open like twelve inches. You can get in a scuttle hole with it. An old freezer, again, that was from the remodel. An old elliptical machine that we changed out. And then one was old radios that we can't get parts for anymore. But we put it all in a in a big pile of radios and a few batteries we had left. That person also bought an old repeater and a twenty-four-foot extension ladder. The total, the total we received, and I gave the check to Tim already, was twelve hundred and fourteen dollars and some odd change.
So do you think it would be best to have some sort of policy written up so that these things don't have to come to council?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Tim, you alluded to the fact that they would have got put back into the accounts that they would fit more to. This is a you. The reason I ask this is a unique situation where our that equipment fund is pretty well depleted, and this is a way of not having to overrun that fund. And we still got money going in there to help with the costs from here until the end of the year of fixing equipment. So we've got a couple of SCBA's in our SCBA's are like at ten years now and are starting to fail. They can be fixed, but when they go in, it costs us money to get them fixed, so.
So this is a variance from the policy that's already in place? Is that what you're saying?
I I assume I maybe Tim could talk to it, but like things we've sold in the past have gone back into those accounts.
Typically, if it's a replacement fund where we're selling equipment that we're gonna replace, those proceeds go back into that fund to help fund the new new equipment purchases. And occasionally we said we will sell some miscellaneous type items, and that just goes into a a revenue account. So that's pretty much the practice.
Is there a policy in place or is there not a policy in place? That's.
No, there's no formal policy. It's it's a practice, but if the council so desires, I could draft up a policy for consideration. That would kind of outline some of the disposals of these assets.
I think that would be a good thing, but I can't speak for everybody, obviously, so. Ms. Palmquist?
I support that to have that policy in place. I know we had talked about this recently with the with the police department selling some items on auction and then using that to replace other equipment. And while some of these items that Chief Eck has described, obviously, have been replaced, like a refrigerator and a freezer, I can see in the future that being we buy new equipment and then you get rid of the older equipment to replace it. So it feels to me like a policy would save a time having the council approve this, and it would ensure that we have the funds available for replacement of equipment as it's needed for each of our departments. and it would ensure that we have the funds available for replacement of equipment as it's needed for each of our departments.
Mr. Catnau?
Thank you. I mean, if we're gonna talk about a policy, I think we have to talk about it in depth. How high are we talking? You know, what's the details of the policy? Because I think the concern that comes up is when it's a large sale of items, and if there happens to be another need that the mayor or the council believes it could be used for, and it just gets kind of thrown into a fund, and it, it becomes a little more discretionary then, so I'm all for a policy, it's just like other spending policies, authority that the mayor and department heads have, it's, you know, at what amounts? So I would just take that into consideration when talking about a policy for that.
Seems like there's enough interest in a policy that, uh, Mr. Catnau, if you'd put it on the Finance and Property Committee meeting for the next time around? Thank you. All right, so you did not want to hold out item two at all, Mr. Delaney, we're good, okay? So we are, have a motion, uh, and a second to pass the remainder of the minutes, holding out three and seven. Seven being talked about at the end of the meeting. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your ballots.
Justin's a nay.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight a's, zero nays. Uh, Mr. Catnau, item three.
Uh, city's contract with the heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, I wanted to invite Stacy up to speak. If you could just speak to, last year being the first year we really did a contract and outlined specifically what you would provide for us and what we were looking for, and how that went, and, and what we're looking at going into twenty twenty-five.
Hello. Um, yeah, so I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, but you should have the agreement in the packet as well as the last update that I gave in July? Is that correct or no? Yeah. Um, so I'm just going, going to talk a little bit about some updates since, um, the last update in July. Um, first, uh, talking about tracking events that are within the city, uh, as well as an estimated number in attendance. So Cranberry Blossom Vendor Fair unfortunately could not happen, thanks to the weather, right? That's something that we don't really have any control over, but for the parade, um, estimated number of businesses, there were fifty-nine businesses that participated in the parade with over a thousand in attendance. And again, this is estimated because it's very difficult to track, um, with these community events. Downtown Grand Affair was held on September eighth. We had sixty-eight businesses with over two thousand in attendance, and we had little clickers, so we tried as best as we could, but, um, just, uh, to understand, last year, we had, we partnered with a car club, and they had roughly a hundred cars. This year, they were maxed out at almost two hundred. So just those individuals on top of everybody else who came, yeah, there was, there was a lot of people there, so that was really great. All of the food vendors that were there sold out, so it was, it was a really good day. Um, we also just relaunched a business expo, so this hasn't been done in, uh, five-plus years. We had forty-one businesses that participated, um, with booths and fifty-plus people in attendance, which, again, it's slower, but that's what happens with newer events, and so we were happy with the turnout. There were a lot of great connections made with the businesses and hoping to grow that from there. And obviously, I do not have a number yet for rekindle because that hasn't happened yet. Um, talking about tracking and analyzing existing businesses, so in July, at that time, we had met with sixty-seven businesses. As of October ninth, we've met with eighty businesses. And with that, the same challenges are being talked about, right? So the inflation, supply chain, hiring and wage inflation, um, competition with them and getting the word out about their products and services, so that remains consistent. The concerns with doing business in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, again, are the same that I'm hearing. So, um, the perception of a lack of communication or support, um, building permit zoning restrictions and downtown parking. And then the last question that I pull out, um, for you guys, because I think this is important, is what businesses would like to see for community growth? With that, still, um, having an actual identity in Wisconsin Rapids is something I feel, um, businesses feel that we're struggling with. More housing and more specific affordable housing, more options as well as hotels. That's a big, big struggle in our area. Um, more opportunities for the community, attracting and retaining talent. And I've also heard, um, more business involvement as well as transportation issues. Um, I have more specifics, but I choose not to go into those specifics on a public platform, as I don't think that that's appropriate. But I, um, ha- have conversations with Kyle, more than happy to have one-on-one conversations to go into more of the specifics. I just, again, I don't feel comfortable going into those details, uh, on here. Um, we're still working on gathering the information for the largest number of employers, but the July, at the July, um, update, those were the numbers that I had currently. And again, um, continuing to provide assistance with startups, um, entrepreneurs. Something that isn't on here, that I'm not gonna go into a ton of detail yet because we haven't finalized it, but the board, um, we are having conversations about utilizing or reallocating our current, a portion of our revolving loan fund, uh, revenue, and starting some type of a grant program with a training piece to help businesses start up. Um, so I don't want to go into too much detail, but that's going to be discussed in December, hopefully to launch in twenty twenty-five, which would be a huge benefit for our local businesses. I'll stop there and see if there's any questions with some of these updates.
Thank you, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Katnau, seconded by Pence Gover to approve the motion. Thank you, Stacy, appreciate your time. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. All right. B, Public Works.
Sorry.
Public Works Committee meeting held on October third, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mayor, the Public Works Committee met on Thursday, October third, twenty twenty-four, in council chambers, all members were present. The meeting was called to order at five PM. Item two, we reviewed the Engineering and Street Department monthly activity report. Item three, review and consider approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin to approve, that motion carried. Item four, review and consider grade crossing improvements on Kingston Road. The committee discussed the cost of upgrading the grade crossing equipment at a cost of around three hundred and twenty thousand, or the discontinuance of Kingston Road at a cost of around a hundred and thirty thousand. Excuse me. The impacts to adjacent property owners in surrounding neighborhoods was also discussed. The committee wanted some additional time to consider this item and perhaps meet on-site with the intent to reconsider this item at the November seventh meeting, and no action was taken. Item five, review the traffic study at Ninth Street North and Wisconsin Street and consider adding yield con- control on Wisconsin Street. The engineering, Engineers Traffic Study was reviewed, it was a motion by Pence Gover and seconded by Palmquist to add yield control, and that motion carried three zero. Item six, review the traffic study at Tenth Street North and Wisconsin Street and consider adding yield control on Wisconsin Street. The Engineers Traffic Study was reviewed, motion by Austin, seconded by Pence Gover to add yield control, and that motion carried three zero. Item seven, review and consider requests from Alderperson Pollock to install a, an always-stop at Fourteenth Street North and Apricot Street. The Engineers Traffic Study dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, was reviewed, and the recommendation for no change to existing traffic control was restated due to the lack of accident history, sufficient vision, and low traffic volumes. Alderperson Pollock introduced Mr. William Abel, resident at fifteen-ten Apricot Street, to discuss concerns related to speeding issues, especially by motorcycles, and the safety issues created for pedestrians. The police department was notified prior to the meeting for the specific speeding issues, and the speed trailer was going to be moved to this location along with speed enforcement. Alderperson Pence Gover motioned to install stop signs at Fourteenth Street North and Apricot. Uh, that motion failed for lack of a second, and no action was taken. Item eight, review the referral list, list was reviewed with items nine, uh, being removed, and referral from Alderperson Delaney regarding garbage and recycling services for mobile home parks was presented and added to the list. The next meeting date is set for November seventh, twenty twenty-four, at five PM, and we adjourned at five fifty-seven PM. And with that, I submit the Public Works, the report of the Public Works Committee for approval.
Thank you. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Veneman to approve, seconded by Palmquist. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, seven a's to one nay. Item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Delaney?
I actually have a question on that last one, can I ask a, a question? It seemed to me like, uh, they were going back to, to do a, uh, speed study and stuff at the Apricot and Fourteenth Street. Is that correct, or am I wrong in that?
So a, uh, initial traffic study was done, um, in April, and that was primarily a speed-related request. I'm not sure if the, the origination of that request is from the same individual. I think both of them have, had talked with Mr. Pollock. But then subsequent to that, there was a second request for, for an always-stop.
All right, thanks. Okay. The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee held a meeting on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. Item one was called to order, meeting was called to order at three oh-five PM. Item two is a HR update, update was provided, no action taken. Item three, discuss and consider for approval, the proposed changes to the Parks and Recreation Pay Rate Schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pollock to approve the proposed changes to the Parks and Recreation Pay Rate Schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five, motion carried three zero. Item four, discuss and consider for allowing all DPW staff within wastewater streets and parks to have full uniforms, motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluas to allow for DPW staff within wastewater streets and parks to have full uniforms. Motion carried two to one. Item five, consider a revision to the compensatory time off policy to provide that eighty hours of compensatory time be allowed to be rolled over to the following year, motion by Pluas, seconded by Pollock to approve the compensatory time off policy to provide that eighty hours of compensatory time be allowed to be rolled over to the following year, motion carried three zero. Item six, committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight-five, pair one, pair E, Wisconsin statutes. Let's read, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public, public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business, uh, public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, motion by Delaney, seconded by Pollock to go into closed session. Roll call, vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, motion carried three zero. Closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and strategy regarding the commencement, commencement of collective bargaining of successor labor agreements with the IAFF and WRPPA. Item says, item seven, committee will adjourn in closed session, motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluas to adjourn, motion carried three zero. The meeting adjourned at four oh-one PM.
What are your wishes?
A motion to approve the balance of the report, holding out item six for closed session. All right, Ryan's got the motion, so I'd like to hold out six.
All right. I.
Motion, motion to approve holding out six.
All right, so motion by Austin to, and holding out item six by Katnau. Seconded by Pence Gover. Mr. Catnau?
I'd like to hold it out for closed, the closed session at the end, because it's a closed session item, right?
Fine.
I don't have anything to say, so.
All right, so holding out item six for closed session, what are your wishes on voting for the remainder of the minutes? Hold on one second. You're good? You're okay? Go ahead and cast your vote if you haven't already. Justin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Item D, Legislative Committee meeting held on October first, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Catnau?
Meeting of the Legislative Committee was held on Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty-four, at six PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item one was called to order, meeting was called to order at six oh-seven PM. Item two was discuss and consider for approval and ordinance which would require that the municipal judge be an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Wisconsin. Motion by Katnau, seconded by Austin to approve the ordinance. Motion carried two-one with Delaney voting in the negative. Item three, discussion regarding the city ordinance regulating chickens found in twenty-five dot oh-two, pair three of the municipal code. Motion by Katnau, seconded by Austin to direct staff to revise the ordinance and remove the requirement that the applicant needs to notify neighboring property owners, owners. Motion carried three zero. Item four was adjournment, motion by Austin, seconded by Katnau, adjourned, the meeting, meeting was adjourned at six thirty-eight PM.
Thank you, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Palmquist to.
Approve holding out item three.
Approve item three?
Regarding the chicken ordinance.
All right, I got a motion by Palmquist to approve the minutes, holding out item three. Looking for a second. Got a second by Pence Gover. Go ahead and vote on the remainder of the minutes, holding out item three.
I'm a nay.
Do you want me to put it in or not? It's not public yet, you want me to put it in or not? Right. Right. Okay, I thought you were saying that, that we should, uh.
Right.
They should talk about it before they vote, okay? Right.
All right, for the remainder of the minutes, we have a motion passed, seven a's to one nay, and Ms. Palmquist?
Yep, I just want to add to the request on the revisions of the ordinance, um, to change the zoning requirements to all residential properties with the restriction of mobile home parks, which would allow for more families, especially those who live in a multi-complex home and have permission from their. permission from their landlords to have chickens, to have chickens. We keep the removal requirement to notify neighbors. Add a number of chickens to be four per one acre property, eight for properties greater than one acre, so long as space ensures that they're humanely kept, so their their coop and their attachment requirements. And then a general clarifying of the structure of the ordinance. There are some things in the sanitation section that are enforcement-related and requirements for property in that section as well that I think could be moved up or should be moved up to the requirements for the requirement section. Motion to have all of those changes made.
I have a motion by Palmquist and seconded by Delaney to. We're gonna need to put all that on record, though.
Yes, I mean, yeah, that's a referral, yeah.
Right, that would be a referral regarding a revision to the ordinance, and then whether you want to approve this as is or hold this out to take it up when the other ones are taken up. We can't change the ordinance on the, on the floor and have it be approved on the, at the same time, so.
So we would, I would make a motion to reject the changes to this ordinance now that's presented to us. Send it back to legislative to add the other changes, which I will write in another referral and send.
She made the motion to make all the changes, and it was seconded. So that's. Does that need to be withdrawn? Because we can't vote on that one.
Right. I guess it was more in the long lines of a referral to do, to do so. But, right, we couldn't vote on an ordinance with all those things because it's not been presented to the council and noticed, so I guess if you, if the body wants to withdraw that motion from the floor and then entertain a new motion.
So I need a shake of a head kinda to say that you're willing to withdraw the original motion and second? Is that right? Anyone opposed? Okay. So we withdrew the first motion and second, and we are now making a motion to. We're gonna hold on to that motion and let Mr. Catna speak. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So being that we have a ordinance presented before us tonight, I, I think we could do both things. I think we could move forward with the ordinance presented, and then go back and put the rest in. So I would make a motion to pass the ordinance as presented, knowing that there will be a referral to make additional changes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Catna, seconded by Austin, to pass this as, as it stands, and then let the other referral take its course. Mr. Delaney?
Two things. The first thing is, I thought that we could make a change to an ordinance, but it would come back for a second reading. I thought that's what we had.
Well, coming back for a first reading, you're not really even considering it. What you're doing is you're, you're directing staff to change the ordinance, and the, your rule says that if the ordinance is changed, then obviously it comes back. So I, I guess semantics, whether it's next, next month is gonna be the first reading or, or not, it, it, I mean, we, you can't pass that ordinance at this meeting, and this ordinance isn't properly in front of you and noticed, so I guess that's why I would consider it more of a referral, but I guess I'm not, I'm not sure if you want this to go back to legislative and then have it be talked about, or you're trying to have it not go back to legislative and come right back to council? Is that what you're thinking? Is it the better practice?
I thought that we had agreed that any ordinance changes that we made at council would then come back to council the following month. These would be changes to the ordinance.
Right? Okay, but sure, that, that's fine. I guess I would anticipate this would go back to legislative, and then, you know, they would be considered at legislative. I think that's the more appropriate thing, or I mean, I guess maybe Alderperson Palmquist can speak to what her intention was, but.
My intention is for it to be as time-efficient and streamlined as possible. To me, it feels a little awkward to approve and change a portion of the ordinance to then update it and have it posted to the public, to then take it back down. By the time we make the changes, why would we have something that we would change and approve and then post to the public and then take back down and change and approve?
Well, it's, it's just, it's just deleting a paragraph. We wouldn't be take, we wouldn't be doing anything more than deleting a paragraph in it, and then when the next one is approved, it would be, you know, then those sections would be added in, but I.
And historically, it's just taken us a long time to post those for the public. So I'm trying to make this more efficient and save time during election season for the amount of work that goes into making these changes. But if we want to approve this and move on and do it again, great.
I guess I'm, I'm. So is it your intention that for every ordinance that comes that might go through legislative or any other committee, if it comes to the council and someone wants to make major changes to it, it does not go back to legislative or any other committee, it comes right back to council again? Is that the preferred method of how you, you know, how you want to interpret that change in the ordinance? I guess, however you want to do it, I, I was trying to be clear on and giving a suggestion on what I thought should happen. I thought it should go back to legislative since you're talking about quite a bit, quite a few things. But if you want me to make those changes and bring it back to council, I can do that next month.
Sounds like we have another referral to legislative to create a policy or procedure that describes how we're going to do this moving forward.
How we're going to do what moving forward?
Handle this type of request and change, because it sounds like we can either.
Well, I, I was pretty confident on how I thought it should be handled based on how things have been handled in the past, so I, but I will defer to, you know, what the intent, I, I guess I'm getting at, what is, what is the intent? And as I said, I think if it was gonna go back for a totally looking at the entire ordinance, it would be my suggestion that it go to legislative, but we can work on that policy.
Mr. Catna?
Thank you, so. I'm, I'm up to speak. So this, the referral to legislative, what we took up and what I've made a motion to approve here tonight is exactly what you requested, Ms. Palmquist, which was to remove the language requiring a resident to inquire about chickens, a section in the ordinance which states the applicant must notify all abutting property owners of their intention to keep or maintain chickens prior to applying for the permit. That's, that's what the referral was. I think that's what the motion here does tonight. It has evolved since then. Now, making changes on the fly to ordinance, I understand has to be drawn up legally, but I think we could take a step forward and grant your request on the referral that was to legislative tonight, and also take up the changes that were brought up tonight. As far as referring it back to a common council meeting, I think the mayor may have authority to place something directly on the agenda, but I, otherwise it's committees or committee of the whole. But I, I think we could take a step forward with your original referral request, which was to get rid of this language to allow for those who are trying to get chickens in the meantime to not have to notify property owners. So if, if that's not the direction we want ahead, I can rescind my motion, but I made the motion. Being that that was your original request, I thought it would be something that you would like to see done and the rest of the committee who voted for it.
We still have the first and second on the table, so I think we'll hold tight right now. Mr. Delaney?
My second point was, and this isn't directed towards anybody specifically, but through this came out other things which Mrs. Palmquist had alluded to, some of the changes that we had talked about. And I think as an Alderperson that it's important that we, if we see something that may be changed, we can bring it up and discuss it. I think that's probably the best way to do it. And, you know, if it's something that is worthy of our time to have that discussion and then make the changes at that time instead of the endless referrals and keep bringing it back to council. I would hope that we would be proactive in this and in looking at the ordinances that we have and what we can do to change the ordinances so that it better suits our community and our neighborhoods. So I don't think what, what, we shouldn't be working as reactive to situations. We should actually be proactive. I know a lot of the department heads and the chiefs, I'm sure that they're very proactive in what they do, and I don't see that from the council at all. I think what we do is we wait for somebody to call in with a complaint and then we respond to that. But there's a lot of things that need to be changed, that should be changed, and hopefully they will be changed in short order and not this long, drawn-out process where it takes months to get anything done. It's ridiculous.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Aye.
Motion passes seven ayes to one nay. Item ten. Item ten, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports. Those will all be filed and there for your ability to read when you have time. Haven't done so already?
No, not that.
Okay. Item eleven, referrals to committees.
I have a few referrals. Some of these were already brought up in, in committees, but the council had not necessarily heard of them. I have three referrals from Alderperson Delaney. One is regarding animal control services. One is a discussion on garbage and recycling for mobile home parks. And one is a change in language in ordinance chapter two twenty-three Sub C for how council acts on items. And then I have one from Alderperson Pollock to install a four-way stop sign on Fourteenth Street and Apricot, which you already took up at Public Works, but it was not announced as a referral at council, so.
So those are all placed on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item twelve, in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under section one nine point eight-five, Para One, Para E, further Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. A session, and section nineteen point eight-five, Para One, Para G, Wisconsin statutes, which reads conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the litigation in which it is or is likely to come involved. In closed session, the council will discuss and mediate wastewater services settlement agreement with the village of Beeren. What are your wishes? What's that? Oh, and also we will be discussing.
Are we coming back into open though first? But are you coming?
Do we need to come back in and go back out? Okay, so we will take that up after we come out of the first closed session? All right, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I get a motion, I get a motion by Catna to go into closed session. I get a second by Penscover. Go ahead and cast your votes. Justin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Department heads, we are gonna be talking about budget afterwards. You're welcome to join us, but you don't need to. It's up to you. Thank you for your time. I got a motion by Catna.
Make a motion to approve the city of Wisconsin Rapids and village of Beeren agreement in principle as presented.
And I have seconded by Austin. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes, zero nays. Okay.
Was that number six, Jake?
All right. Okay. All right. Referring back to Human Resource Committee meeting, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item six, the committee may go into closed session under section one nine point eight-five, Para One, Para E, Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or the conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will discuss negotiations and strategy regarding the commencement of collective bargaining of successor labor agreements with I. A. F. F. and W. R. P. P. A. What are your wishes?
Motion to move into closed session.
I get a motion by Austin, seconded by Veneman to move into closed session. Questions, comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote.
Hold on, hold on. You've given me time.
All right. Go ahead and cast your vote. Justin?
Aye.
Thank you, although, motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. What options are on the table and which directions you guys would like to go, if, if anything? It's been my first privilege to be a part of the budget process from the inside of City Hall. It's been a very enlightening and educational experience, to say the least. It started out pretty, pretty high in terms of where we came in, when all the numbers came in. And between Tim and I, mainly Tim, went to work and really kinda started whittling down on the big stuff. And that was pretty impressive to see how, how that stuff, you know, what was requested and what was kind of been able to whittle down on quite quickly, and then some of the little stuff that went into effect to try to cut out some of that stuff and get down to the nitty-gritty of what the departments needed and what we needed to do in order to make this a reality. A couple of big things that. A couple of big things that took us, took me by surprise, I guess, was the wage increase and the step system and the. Moving everybody according to the longevity that they're there. That was something we passed last year that didn't necessarily impact until this year. And that was a big chunk of money to kind of figure that out. So in the end, it's kind of leveling itself out, I think this will be the toughest year, of course. It adjusts everything else in the budget accordingly in order to compensate for that. And then the big one, other big one that hit was, I don't know if I've talked to everybody about this, but. The transportation utility ended up being dissolved. It was dissolved because the transportation utility that was identical to the one that we used when we implemented our program. Was also used in Peewaiki and Peewaiki's. Their business, business coalition took it to court and the local court upheld it. That it was legal, they appealed it and appeals court said that it was not legal. And so they took it to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court denied to see it. So therefore it went back to the appeals court, which with the ruling was that it was illegal, so that's where it stayed. So we immediately dissolved our transportation utility, so for the last few months, we haven't been collecting that revenue. In its absence right now, what we're looking at is shifting the. Stormwater utility to compensate for that. In the end, it would offset. Okay, so you had the stormwater utility and the transportation utility on your bill, so we take the. The transportation utility out and increase the stormwater utility. And in order to compensate for what we need to cover it, last year for as a resident owner, you would have been at with both of them, both utilities at sixty-seven, sixty-five. At the new rate right now, we'd be looking at just for the stormwater utility seventy-three, sixty-six. They're increasing six dollars per year in order to get the revenue we need to cover the special assessments. Utility and that's where that kind of started out. Then also, we did talk to the other departments to include WWLC and wastewater and the storm utility. To start having conversations about how to. Spread out the costs of the new construction a little bit more evenly. And everybody was on board with that to kind of take a look at it and figure out what we could do to kind of help out with that cost. And you'll see at the end there that with that, we will be talking about the obligation note or debt that we're looking at is at one point three seven five. But Tim will talk a little bit more about those details. Tim?
Sure, yeah, sure, I mean, I think two of the biggest, you know, proposed or assumptions in the. In the budget to get us where we needed to be was the increase in stormwater utility fee. In lieu of, you know, basically the transportation utility being. Dissolved and ceased operations for it, so if you look on page fourteen. You kind of see a summary of that increase in the stormwater utility fee. So currently, we're at forty-seven fifty-two per equivalent residential unit. The proposed is to increase it fifty-five percent to seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents. That'll generate an additional six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And basically what that revenue will be utilized for is one. Presently, the existing fee or the forty-seven fifty-two supports about three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of. Annual storm sewer construction expenditures. Part of that increase, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four, will then cover, you know, our budget for storm sewer constructions, about five hundred and eight thousand this year. So then that'll be fully funded with the stormwater utility fee, whereas in in past budget, it was partially funded by the fee. Plus then debt proceeds, so now that'll be the construction, at least in this budget, will be completely funded by that fee. Also. The curb and gutter, since that's part of the stormwater system, we're proposing that some of that additional revenue. Will fund the curb and gutter constructions to two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That is, that is a component of the street construction costs, so that will help when the fund the street construction. Where in the past that was not available. And then curb and gutter maintenance that was formally funded with the tax levy will now be used to fund. With the stormwater utility fee, so that six hundred and thirteen is going for essentially those three items. And as you can see down there, the residential property impact that the mayor alluded to earlier. Last year with the trip, with this transportation storm was sixty-seven, sixty-five. And now with no transportation utility fee and the increase in stormwater utility fee, that annual cost of residence will go up to seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents. So that's the one big impact on fees. Now, if you turn to page fifteen, the proposed general obligation promissory note. I listed out, you know, what the budget request for street construction, storm sewer construction and sidewalk construction. As you can see, the street construction expenditures, we are about two point eight million dollars. Some of the project that was removed was East Jackson Street. That's going to be viewed as probably a twenty twenty-six project with the, you know, with the. Coordination with the county and design of their parking lot and then just the the time to get it designed and done. It got deferred to a twenty-six project. Existing revenues that we use to fund is a little bit of property tax levy and some reserves. And then now the new revenue sources there, you'll see where we now have the water and sewer utilities. Funding a portion of the street construction cost. And the theory behind that is, is that. We have to remove, when we replace the utilities, we have to rip up the entire road plus the road base to dig down to get to those utilities and install them. And then build it back up, put in a brand new road base and then obviously the new road. Whereas if we didn't have the utilities there, you could mill and overlay it at a lot cheaper cost. And so it was, we felt it was justified that the utility should. Share in some of that cost differential between a full reconstruct and a mill and overlay. And that's where we came up with those funding sources that weren't there in the past. And then the stormwater utility fee increase, that's that contribution towards the curb and gutter construction. Coming to a net. Street construction expenditures for funding is a million forty-two thousand. The storm sewer construction, same thing there, the East Jackson Street project was removed at sixty-eight, nine hundred. And then we had the existing rate that funded three hundred and twenty-four thousand and then the increase in the fee will then cover the entire cost of storm sewer construction. It's proposed that sidewalk construction, Baker Street along fifty-four, Spring Street, at two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Debt issuance cost of sixty-five coming up to the proposed debt issue to fund the street construction, one million three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Questions? Comments?
I have a question you hinted at at the beginning, Mayor Zacher, about. Wage increases and I can't find the percentage of increase from overall wages. From twenty twenty-four to what we're going to for twenty twenty-five.
Well, right now, the way, all the budgets are based on twenty-four rates because there's been no cost of living. Increase approved for non-representative and obviously we're in the midst of negotiating a twenty-five contract with the police and fire unions. So the only differentials in the budget for wage increases would be any step increases. That a person is entitled to under the new compensation plan.
Okay, then we don't have any city policy or process for wage increases other than standard of living increases? Like we don't have a performance review that allows us to increase wages for employees, it's based on solely longevity?
No, we don't, years and years ago, we did have a merit program that was very short-lived. But no, it's usually basically, it's just across the board, cost of living increase for all.
Except for this new thing that was mentioned that we're paying more based on how long you've been here?
Yes.
Right, yeah, the new compensation plan that went into effect in twenty-four. Basically, there's, how many steps are there, like sixteen? Sixteen steps and you have a control point is step six, which is theoretically market. And then based on years of experience, you can go above market just based on tenure alone.
Okay, thank you.
H R and myself are working on more of a. Where we're trying to assess people more closely and working like a.
Merit-based?
Merit-based, where we're really trying to dive into how we're assessing each other and how we're looking at department heads and how they're looking at their employees and. Not only building that in, but also building that into the communication style that we're working with, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, what we're looking then from you all right now is kind of. I think we've done a lot to figure out what we can do to start whittling down. There's also, you know, there are other things that, you know, are possible. I just need to kind of know where your thoughts are in terms of. What you'd like to see, if we're moving in the right direction and you're comfortable with where we're at. As well, as long as we're going to be talking about the twenty twenty-six budget after we're done with the twenty twenty-five budget here, we're going to start that up pretty quick. Before the year ends. And we can start talking right away about what we want to look for and see in twenty twenty-six. Is there anything that you want us to focus on between now and next week? In terms of this budget and what you'd like to see happen? Yes, Maddie?
I. Understand how much work went into this and I really appreciate it, Tim, the budget highlights and the tables are fantastic, really helps break down what's in the line items. And understanding what we did to decrease some of the expenses and adjust for increases and supplies and whatnot. Have we, do we have a schedule of our fees and when we're going to review them? And is that something that we could use to increase the revenue portion? If our fees haven't been adjusted since, I don't know, twenty fourteen, then we could assess those, increase, and then have more money. To account for that deficit.
Right. Yeah. I don't know if we have an official schedule of fees, like all in one document, but it's probably something that. I know that I did, I had the fire chief reach out to our billing. Ambulance billing service and they came back with some recommendations for some fee increases, the ambulance, just based on kind of comparables, so. I'll be bringing forth a recommendation to raise the ambulance fees, I do believe it's been two to three years since we've looked at them and increased those. But as far as like other fees, as far as, well wastewater, obviously, will, that wouldn't affect this this portion of the budget, but we'll be doing that rate study. As far as I know, our building and permit fees, I'm not sure, Kyle, I know reviews them periodically. And I forgot when we last updated those, if anyone can remember.
Yeah, I would say it's been in the last year or two.
Yeah.
I think when we went to E Plan, that necessitated, so. Some, well, the departments that have fees, the majority of them. Have a schedule of fees that then the council would approve, but it's not an automatic every year they're approved. It's whenever the department had, you know, feels it's necessary to to have them increased. Just thinking, I don't know, your, your, the clerk's fees, some of them, like alcohol licensing is kind of set, you can't really do too much with. With those, but we've increased other fees. In your department, I know, I know we fireworks, we increased, well, that was part of the fire department. But the goal was to take the fees out of the ordinances so that we didn't have to go through an ordinance change if an increase, if fee was increased. And then to go back, to go towards a department fee list, I know Joe Ikestead. Has a fee list for their permitting and such, so then you, what the council does is adopt that fee schedule and then. It's really up to the department head of when to, you know, bring it back up for review, I guess, but there's not an automatic, like each year, we we look at each department.
Mr. Delaney?
This is the first that I heard that the transportation utility was taken away and I would, I have read the Peewaiki's. Transportation utility and although we may have started down the same lines of them, I do not think that our end product. Ended up close to what they had, they were doing it for general funds. And ours was specific for the special assessments and I do think that with our. The work that we put into it and the differences that we have, I do, I don't think that. It resembles what they they had in place. And secondly, I just wanted to say, boy, thank God, because. At one point, they were talking, was it like four point two million or two point four million dollars? And if we had gone that route, the city definitely would be spending that money. And in order to replace that, I mean, boy, that would be something tough to do. That's all I had, thank you. Oh, if you want to answer.
Yeah, we, we have. We have suspended billing under ordinance and looking, reviewing options regarding it. It has not, it's not been repealed or anything that would go to legislative and we're just reviewing different options. I can tell you that the the decision of the Court of Appeals. It's unfortunate that it didn't really address really many issues in terms of the issues that were raised, that the city raised. You know, about how it's different than a town because the town of Buchanan is the one that was originally so. And home rule, you know, that huge thing and so unfortunately, the the decision. Was not very clear on why they sustained or why they agreed with. You know, not not allowing the ordinance and saying, simply saying it was a tax, so. That's, that's to kind of be determined and I think within the next few weeks, we'll have some guidance or some information for you to make a decision on. How you want to go forward, but it was recommended to suspend it at this, at this time, so we have.
Sorry about that, that was my, my fault on the terminology there. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Ryan?
Yeah, the consultant on that, was that R A Smith?
Yes.
Would we, would we be able to get them involved as well? Because they they made some pretty adamant arguments.
Oh, well, right in the league of Wisconsin municipalities, basically, yeah, everyone was very supportive of it and that's, that's the shame that it. You know, at least consider all of these very good arguments that we have and then, okay, say why they're not correct instead of just saying, yeah, this is a tax like. Town of Buchanan's was and not really develop or respond to any of the arguments, so. I mean, I think there is some appetite for, for us to be, well, let me, I should probably talk about this in closed, closed session. Or I can send, you know, you my thoughts on it, but. It's not completely dead yet, but.
Mr. Kanna?
So water and light now contributing to road construction, is that new to twenty twenty-five at this amount?
Yeah, it's twenty twenty-five, yeah.
It's, but it's new to it, right?
Right, yes.
I just, I just wanted to know how we came to that finally. What, is that a decision made internally, but you're sharing with us now, I think it's a big deal and I think it's great, but I just want to know more about. I think it's great, but I just want to know more about it.
No, I think there was some talk about, you know, how to work together as one city and, and work together as departments. So the conversation just kind of flowed in terms of, well, what are the ways we can work together to kind of help this situation out? And we floated a few things by. And I think this was a way for us to, for everybody to see it and feel that it's justified. It wasn't a, you know, whatever, like tit for tat or whatever. It was more of a, this makes a lot of sense and everybody was agreement to it. So it was just a matter of going down the right path and, and coming to the conclusions together as a team. And, and again, I commend everybody at WWLC that helped with that conversation. And, and even the, the people on the council have been very open for commission there and talking. So I think it's been good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I like the, thank you guys internally who worked with Water and Light. I think that's, that's a huge win for the residents as we can share those costs. How much did that offset total? Do you have that number?
Between the two utilities, around a little over four hundred thousand dollars.
So four hundred thousand dollars less that we're borrowing and paying interest on. So I, yeah, I mean, great job by everybody on that. That was one big thing I noticed. What, what was your other question about what you're trying to get from us? Is this just like a presentation of the budget to us?
This is, but again, if, if you, if anybody has any ideas or have been, you know, I know it, we're just kind of getting this to you and you're going to get more information. So feel free to reach out. But if we're going to sit down with the department heads next week, we want to give them a little bit of time to adjust their budgets accordingly. If there's any changes that you want to direct me with, that you want us to kind of pursue over the next week?
I think you might have done this exercise with some if you haven't, but there's certain areas of the city and departments, or however you want to call them, that I think it would be helpful for them to go through a zero-based budget exercise. So we don't have to go through it for them. Because it's some of the areas that have been hotter topics in, in recent years. And, you know, essentially, if you're not familiar with zero-based budgeting, rather than taking the same budget from year to year and just moving forward, it would be as if you're starting off anew and you're building up what you need and the resources that you, you want to go forward with from the start of a new year. Like, if you were just to start something and, and this is what I would need. And I think in the city, we, I know we do, we do it every year. It's like, this is what the department or this, this is what we budgeted for this service last year. It's going to be that plus whatever else they need. And if it's not going to be done actually for twenty-twenty-five, at least if they're, they could go through the exercise and, and have some of that for us to view. This, this is nice in the formal form, but, you know, in different areas, it, it might be helpful to do that exercise.
Yeah, I think it is something that we've already talked about a little bit. And again, the upside to it is kind of making them think a little harder about, you know, what do we actually need? And it's not just a pool of money that's there kind of waiting for the needs to come up throughout the year. The downside to it is it does create a little bit more work in terms of kind of setting up a PO system. Tim and I talked about that. So it, you know, but at the same time, it definitely will be a good exercise to see what it is exactly they need for, you know, the operations to run and then the extra stuff that is there. And we just kind of looked at it, you know, kind of briefly. And it doesn't amount to, you know, when it comes to the one point three seven five for the roads that we still need, it's not going to put a big ding in that. It would be somewhat of a ding, but in the end, we'd still need that there for the purchases that need to come up this year also or in twenty-twenty-five. So I think it's something we'll definitely look at. And I'll have the department heads kind of look at it from that framework and kind of see where we go from there. Does that work for you? Anything else?
And, and like, you know, just want to comment that we're still kind of going through the budgets. And, you know, I've kind of got a list of things. So it's, you know, we're still, you know, analyzing it and coming up and, you know, stuff like that. So there, there could be some changes. I don't, not significantly, but just wanted to let you know. Because I know you guys like to receive three or four drafts of the budget, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick?
Just one quick thing. The last mayor had spoke a lot about how when someone retires, if their job could be combined with some other people's job, if that works out. I know it's been done quite a bit in the past, actually. And I was just wondering, looking to the future, have you identified those positions which we may not need and can be combined with another person's current job?
I am, you know, looking into that. I'm, I'm going to need a little more than six months on that. I think twenty-six or throughout the duration of twenty-five, I'll be kind of focusing on that more. There are a few positions that come up as people leave for various reasons. I am working with the department head to find out if those are necessary or not. Definitely can see the amount of anxiety it causes when, when I bring those questions up. But I think it's good conversations to have. And we should, you know, go down those, those paths and figure it out for sure if we have to bring new people on. But definitely be looking at that throughout this next year. Uh, Matty?
So I noticed that in the, on page four, we've got the Heart of Wisconsin. Twenty-twenty-three was twenty-five thousand. And we have that, that was approved this evening for twenty-five thousand. Did that move to another fund, that twenty-five thousand for the Heart of Wisconsin?
That's going to come out of the room tax.
Thank you.
I do want to focus, just since you brought that up. And Shane has talked about that last year. But I want, I want their focus to be more on business, business development, business services, outside of all the other stuff that they do for the community, which is all important stuff. But I think for sure, we want to kind of put, put some, some weight on the fact that we need them to step up in, in business, I'd say development, but business support to really be there. And Stacy did speak of it tonight. And I'd like that to be really their big focus for our community. Any other questions? Yeah, we just had one through engineering and one through wastewater. Yeah, so I met with the department heads and kind of talked through what they do and, and how important it is to, to the, to the group as a whole and how much of a hole it would create if they weren't there, so. Anyone else? All right. Appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and support in that. We did make a change, if everybody wants to put this on their calendar, for the, it's for the, it's for your public hearing for the twenty-twenty-five budget for Thursday, November fourteenth. We can bump that up to six o'clock instead of-
Yeah, I, I had the wrong date in my head. So if you guys want the council chambers-
Could have started a little earlier.
Start at four o'clock if you want.
Six is good for everybody.
And we have a committee of the whole a week from Thursday, correct? Review department budgets, just so everyone's reminded of that.
Committee of the whole a week from Thursday at six o'clock?
Is it the twenty-fourth?
That was my last comment. So next steps will be to review the department budgets. We, we will get a narrative summary from the department before you get the line items. The goal of that meeting is to have all of those documents reviewed before we sit down and then go through them. If there are no questions from that department, we can stamp it and move on. If there are questions, then we'll stop and ask and ask our department heads to explain further.
Yeah, so we won't be asking them to go through line item by line item. We'd want you guys to kind of have a pretty sound idea as to what you, where their department budgets are at. They're going to talk more of an overview, so. Tim, did you have something else?
I was just going to say, my goal is to get those out Thursday to everyone. So you have a good week to, to review them. I just got to kind of compile them and put them in some-
You'll all be happy to know you'll be getting one from the mayor's office also. Thank you, Emily. All right. Item fifteen. Adjournment. What are your, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Austin, second by, by Delaney. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all those, eyes have it. Good night, everybody.